Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Hartsfield, South Carolina, Public Hearing and Regular City Council Meeting for Tuesday, August eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Thank you all for being here. I appreciate all of you who are here for the presentations and also some of our members of the public are just here for moral support. We're very glad to have you. Do have a good bit of business on the agenda this evening, so I'll try to keep it moving with, of course, plenty of time for questions, but at the same time be mindful of my dinnertime. So in that effort, I will ask. Say again?
Oh, I just said every, all of us still have time.
Yeah.
Bring snacks.
Mayor of the public here.
Snacks available.
I believe we have a birthday in the back. Is that, uh, is that right?
Chief.
Do you want to say before the invocation or after it? I'm just kidding. But, uh, happy birthday.
Thank you, Chief Burr.
Tell that to Ms. Mac, would you lead us in the invocation and we'll follow that by the Pledge of Allegiance and Misability Pledge. I would invite you all to stand and pray in your faith, we pray in ours.
Let us pray. Most holy and everlasting Father, throughout God and God alone. Father, we've come first to take you thank you for all you do. Father, it is in you that we live, move, and have our being. Father, we've come to these halls today to do the business of the city of Hartsfield that we all love so much. Father, we thank you for all that you do. You keep a hedge of protection around the city of Hartsfield, Father. Fortify, let the walls be fortified. Father, you can bring peace. Help us to be watchful and mindful and look out and take care of each other right here in Hartsfield. So, Lord, as we continue through this building, we invite you to put a presence into this room and... We ask you to keep us all in your care, all of our residents, all of our cities, our citizens, all of our staff, our fire, EMS, everyone and those that come in and out of the city of Hartsfield. Father, we ask you in the name of Jesus and under his precious word, these things that we ask you do. In Jesus' name you pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others at every point, providing services for the betterment of our city.
Thank you, everyone. And, uh, Chief Burr, you can thank Councilman Hungerpillar for reminding me about your birthday. I would entertain a motion to waive the reading of and approve the minutes of the September tenth, two thousand twenty-four regular city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Second. And the September, uh, special city meeting, is that included in your motion? Is it included in your second, sir?
Yes, it is.
All right. Thank you for that. Is there any discussion before we approve the minutes or don't approve the minutes? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of waiving the reading and approving the minutes of September tenth and seventeenth, September seventeenth meetings, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have, the minutes are approved. Thank you. Apologize for the tongue question. Moving right along to our proclamations. Is there anyone here to receive the World Mental Health Day proclamation? Hearing none, Ms. Mac, would you receive it? Ms. Mac, I appreciate you reminding, uh, clerks about, uh, having this on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Um, I'll do the highlights here. Whereas mental health is a vital component of our overall well-being and raising awareness about mental health is key to building supportive and inclusive communities. And whereas nearly one billion people worldwide live with a mental disorder while meaning life access to quality mental health care, the World Health Organization estimates that annually, global economy loses approximately one trillion dollars productivity due to depression and anxiety. And whereas World Mental Health Day is an opportunity to raise awareness, promote understanding, and advocate for policies and initiatives to support mental health and well-being for all, the theme for World Mental Health Day this year is, it is time to prioritize mental health in the workplace, emphasizing the need for mentally healthy work environments and addressing workplace mental health challenges. Now, therefore, I, Casey Hancock, mayor of the great city of Hartsfield and state of South Carolina, do hereby proclaim October tenth, two thousand twenty-four as World Mental Health Day and encourage all of you to support organizations working to prioritize mental health, so together we can all make a difference and promote mentally healthy communities and citizens. I would like to present this to you, Councilman Mac, for all the work that you do in support of mental health and mental health awareness.
Thank you so much.
You do the same thing, of course, you are welcome.
Yes, I think it's very important. I reminded them about the Mental Health Awareness Month and Day, and we have to watch for signs because there are signs along the way. People just don't wait for one day and just, you know, commit a horrible act. So be mindful of the signs, starting with your children on up to your elders, because there are signs and, you know, tips along the way, but you have to recognize them and be very intent on doing that. And that way you can save that person's life, use whatever resources are available to you. There's suicide hotlines and all types of things like that. And all of that, anxiety, depression, it, it can go more than just, you know, some little small thing up to that person taking their life or taking their life of someone else's life. So, mental health is very important, and I want us to be able to fly a flag so that we can make people aware.
Thank you. I would add to that, too, to both individually and encourage your colleagues where available to take advantage of the police assistance programs that the city offers when we make counseling available to our staff and use it, it's there. Thank you. Also have Breast Cancer Awareness Month, would you accept that one? Of course, as well. Right. Um, whereas in South Carolina, approximately four thousand four hundred women are diagnosed with breast cancer and almost eight hundred die from the disease each year, and whereas in Darlington County, among women, breast cancer was the first most commonly diagnosed cancer and number two leading cause of death from fifteen to nineteen. And whereas metastatic breast cancer occurs when breast cancer spreads to other parts of the body, including the bones, lungs, liver, and brain, and whereas breast cancer is creating, helps find cancer early when it is more treatable, and whereas it is vital for those affected by breast cancer to have access to quality, affordable health care and that research of all forms of breast cancer continues to be vigorous and supportive. And whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month serves as an opportunity to increase awareness of the disease, to encourage individuals to have a plan to protect the disease in early stages, I, Casey Hancock, mayor of the city of Hartsfield and the state of South Carolina, do hereby proclaim this month as Breast Cancer Awareness Month throughout the city and encourage all of you to support the fight against breast cancer and never be silent as we keep winning and fighting until the fight is won. As, uh, my mother died of metastatic breast cancer, so this is very important to me as well, but I'm honored to present it to you tonight and we'll thank you very much, I appreciate that. Do you have any comments on it?
Yes, um, so I have spoken with the organization and they're donating, um, some pink bags with breast cancer cancer awareness, and they're filled with, um, different items that explain how to do exams and then, uh, different items that they can use such as healthy eating and that type thing. And I'll be distributing those to some, uh, people in the community who do not have transportation so that they will feel loved and cared for and that there's someone thought about them.
Okay. Sure.
Can I have your picture?
Sure. Come on, run them up and turn around. I think it.
Thank you.
Okay, Fire Prevention Week. We've got a couple of people here who said this one. Uh, did I hear my voice?
Happy birthday.
Okay. Shout on the deck.
Come on, birthday guy.
That will go soon since you're up.
Go ahead.
Uh, gentlemen, thank you for being here and said this. Whereas the city of Hartsfield is committed to keeping everyone safe, both residents and visitors alike, fires a serious public safety concern in homes and locations where people are at the greatest risk of home fire. And whereas in twenty-two, more than twenty-seven hundred people in the country lost their lives to home fires, uh, the fire department responding to three hundred and sixty thousand home fires, roughly three out of five related deaths occur in homes without smoke alarms or with smoke alarms that are not functioning. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in the home fire almost half. Smoke alarms detect smoke before we can, alerting us to danger and giving crucial time, sometimes as little as, uh, only two minutes to escape the safety. And whereas all residents of everywhere, but specifically in the city of Hartsfield, should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area and on every level of the home, it's important to test these at least once a month. It is essential for smoke alarms to meet the needs of all family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. Whereas homes having a well-planned and practiced fire escape plan are more prepared and significantly increase chance of survival during a fire. And whereas our Hartsfield Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and education, and whereas our civilians are proactive about safety and can take steps to protect themselves and families from fire, especially their homes. So the theme of this year's Fire Prevention Week, Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You, highlights the importance of having working smoke alarms in every home. Now, therefore, I, mayor of the great city of Hartsfield and the state of South Carolina, do hereby proclaim this week as Fire Prevention Week and Prevention Week and urge everyone to prioritize fire safety and ensure their homes have working smoke alarms. Gentlemen, thank you for the work that you do, appreciate it. Do you, would you like to comment on the services provided and smoke detectors?
We have a program, if you can call in, we'll come through your home, install smoke detectors and see if it can take free jobs doing it. So, you know, fire, just prepare the city, it's called the fire department, you have to come out, even if you just need to replace your batteries, we'll come out and check and take your batteries. Have to do that.
And encourage your neighbors to.
Yes.
Reserves.
Yes.
Awesome, thank you guys.
Chief.
Oh, um, Councilman.
Yes. Can, does anyone know why you should sleep with your bedroom door closed? Nobody knows.
I know.
Tell them, chief.
Keep the fire and smokes from coming into your, your room at night. Know it's a hard thing to do, but it's, we highly encourage that. We would put a lot of fires, the fire damage, that would usually have the worst.
That's interesting point out because you could easily argue that if you smelled the smoke sooner, you'd be safer, but it sounds like statistically that's not the case.
They are slow.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Um, I know we have one, someone here who accepts domestic violence awareness month. If you would join me up front?
Mr. Mayor, you missed your picture.
Oh, I missed my picture.
I have a picture of you.
Okay. Thank you for being here. Good to see you. Um, whereas domestic violence is a serious social problem that affects people of all races, ages, genders, and income levels, and whereas domestic violence is widespread and affects over four million Americans every year, whereas one in thirty have witnessed an incident of domestic violence, whereas children that grow up about homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average. And whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars, gambling, expenses, law enforcement costs, et cetera. And whereas only coordinated community effort will put a stop to this crime. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and show support for organizations and individuals, provide critical advocacy, advocacy services and assistance to victims. Now, therefore, I, Casey, mayor of the great city of Hartsfield and the state of South Carolina, do hereby proclaim this month as Domestic Violence Awareness Month throughout the city of Hartsfield and urge all of you to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our communities and also want to say, please support the agents, workers, and volunteers in our conversations to do this work because it's incredibly, it is incredibly difficult and we really appreciate you. Um, it's my honor to present this to you, I can, I was it, uh, thank you for being here and of course, if you have any comments or...
Um, I just want to say this year, the, um, Domestic Violence Awareness Month was next more to the coalition than ever. Just since December, we've had four victims just in our county that have lost their lives due to domestic violence, and that's just ones that have gotten reported. So if anybody, anybody that they suspect is being abused, please have them contact us, they can just call us, they don't have to give us their name, we can just advise them, give god them, do whatever. We brought brochures and some little gift bags, and I do want to touch on the breast cancer awareness, well, I appreciate that. Fifteen months ago, I was down in the square stage building that's at, and so I'm still fighting that fight. Um, so I'm gonna, thank you.
And you're still keeping up a bit fight?
I am, I will, too. But, um, but yes, please, if, if you suspect anybody, please have them contact PD Coalition, they can contact law enforcement. And I'm actually in the process of trying to join up with law enforcement to get some kind of training for law enforcement to deal with this because we've had some incidences where they weren't quite sure what was going on or whatever, so we're, we're trying to team up with them. And I appreciate you coming to our Blue Release last night, we have Blue Release for our victim last night, and we have a D V I M walk on the nineteenth as well as the...
St. Darlington.
Yes, it's gonna be on Square Courthouse.
Okay.
That one's actually breast cancer awareness and, uh, around so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Oh, yeah, thank you. You didn't remind us.
Hey, she got you. She's gotta step up.
Thank you.
Person, the person with the camera got you that time.
Butler Academy. Ms. Trae, if you would join us. That's good to see you, thank you for being here. Whereas the city of Hartsfield is proud to be the home of Butler Academy, which educates young people who will go on to become successful citizens, parents, employers, and employees. And whereas the Alliance for a Healthier Generation recently announced a list of America's healthiest schools for the year. And whereas America's Healthy Schools Program honors schools for men implementing best practices for the health of their students, staff, and family. And whereas this Butler, this year Butler Academy was recognized with this prestigious distinction, and whereas the National War recognizes Butler Academy's dedication to supporting the well-being of students and staff, now therefore I, Casey Hancock, mayor of this great city, do hereby proclaim October twenty-fifth of this year as Butler Academy is one of America's healthiest schools day in the city of Hartsfield and ask all of you to applaud the students, faculty, support staff, and parents of Butler Academy for this outstanding achievement. Thank you so much for all that you do, we're super proud of you and, uh, present this, of course, if you'd like to say, you're welcome.
Sure, thank you for the opportunity. I just want to say thank you, I think what's really, um, interesting is that as we also celebrate and acknowledge, uh, acknowledge, um, World Mental Health Day as well, um, one of the, it's, it's maybe not obvious, but healthiest schools always makes you think of what we often do, or what we do, right? But this award is actually, um, if you can have up to nine, be recognized in up to nine different categories, and nutrition is only one of those. Um, and so what's really neat about what we're doing at Butler Academy is we prioritize the social and emotional well-being of our scholars first, our families and our staff, and that's one of the main things we were acknowledged for, we were acknowledged in five of the nine areas. Um, and so we're really proud of that, um, we was one of them too, but we are really proud of, we, you know, whole child approach to education and, um, just really supporting our families and our staff as well, so.
Yeah, we got a picture. Get out to you.
Come on, you don't have to move.
I'll be waiting.
See, yeah. You're worried.
and longevity of the community, and whereas the strength of the Hartsfield High program is a premier educational opportunity afforded to students, and whereas the Hartsfield High International Baccalaureate, I was gonna say IB, program seeks to partner with the student, school community, local community, and international community, whereas the Hartsfield High School IB program promotes and encourages students to be caring, balanced, and academic risk takers, now therefore I, Casey Hancock, mayor of the great city of Hartsfield, do hereby proclaim the week of the seventh to eleventh as International Baccalaureate Week here in the city of Hartsfield and ask all of you to applaud this premier academic opportunity for our youth in Hartsfield and also for the students themselves and all of our working people. Congratulations. Um, would you like to say anything? Would you like to say something?
Um, usually Mr. Andrews, um, would ask the students to talk about their extended essay, um, but he's not here. Um, uh, Councilman Hungerpillar is in a way here in his stead, so, um...
Hello.
Um, usually, um, students in our IB program have to write a four thousand word essay, and so Emily here is representing the program tonight, so since Mr. Andrews is not here, I will have Emily talk about what she will be writing about, and that's one of the requirements of students in our program. So I'll have Emily talk about that as her, um, requirement for graduating this year.
So my, um, extended essay topic is on bipolar disorder, specifically how advancements have been made in different psychological studies that affect the understanding, identification, and treatment of bipolar disorder.
Interesting, I'd love to read that one. Seriously, if you could send it, send it my way or our way, it'd be interesting to see.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for being here, we got a, you're a little photo up. Pleasure.
Thank you.
Please say it. Absolutely. Community planning month? Uh, okay. Thank you for being here, commission. Ladies and gentlemen, these are three members of our planning commission here to accept the, uh, Community Planning Month proclamation. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and everything else, and whereas planners can help navigate this change with their different insights and expertise to provide better choices for how people can live, and whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas the month of October is designated as a national planning month throughout the United States of America and its territories, and the American Planning Association endorses Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight how planning is essential to every community and how planners are uniquely positioned to identify solutions to communities' most difficult housing, transportation, and land use questions and the changes that they go through over time. And whereas the celebration of this month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedicated, dedication of appointed planning commission members who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of our great city, and whereas we recognize the many valuable contribution, contributions made by the professional community and planners in the city of Hartsfield and extend our heartfelt thanks to the continued commitment to public service by these professionals that are, for I, Casey, mayor of the great city of Hartsfield, do hereby proclaim this month as Community Planning Month. In conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month, I encourage all of you to thank your, uh, planning commissioners and, uh, the planning staff here in the city of Hartsfield who keep the machine running. We appreciate it very much. Thank you for being here, we need my vote chamber. Um, thank you, city council, Mayor Hancock, for highlighting the importance of planning of all. We appreciate your volunteer. Thank you. Time to get up. Get on in there. Thank you. Appreciate it. Good to see you.
Thank you all for what you do. So Mayor Hancock, four out of seven of the proclamations touched on mental health, so that, that's how I know we need to fly flags.
Yeah, I understand. Good point. Uh, okay, moving on, um, to the public comment period, we have four individuals signed up. Um, if you would, uh, um, come forward, uh, and state your name and address for the record before you speak. Mrs. Wilkinson, you're first on the list. Please limit your comments to two minutes or less. Um, and of course, we do not take any action on any items here, uh, but we're very interested to hear what you have to say. So thank you for being here, it's good to see you.
Thank you, good to see y'all again. I just want to give you an update of where we are with our sanctuary villas, application to state housing, um, we still are waiting to hear back from phase one, the nine percent application deadline has been delayed, delayed, delayed. Um, so we are asking for, um, a resolution this evening for the four percent deadline, which is the end of this month, um, where we're gonna just encompass the entire parcel as one development. Um, if we hear back from state housing in the next week, we'll pivot and break it back up into two again, but I just want to let y'all know, we still are waiting to hear back from that and appreciate all your efforts that you gave for us for, um, putting forth a great application. I just wanted to give you an update on that.
Appreciate you being here, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Uh, Ms. Traeber, you're next on the list.
Hi, my name is Natalie Traeber, and my address is three sixteen Mooreville, Hartsfield.
Thank you.
Um, so I'm a member of scouting BSA, and my family and I have been really active in the Hartsfield scouting troop, troop five twenty-three, and my brother eagled out of that troop, he's now an adult leader, and my father's been an assistant scoutmaster for years, and I'm working on my Eagle rank, so I'm working on my Eagle Scout project, and it is a project for the community of Hartsfield, and so I wanted to come and just introduce it to you tonight. Um, so I have met with Mayor Hancock and Mr. Daniel Moore about it a few times, but the project is an outdoor community stage in Murray Park, and I have, if anyone wants to see, I brought along some artist drawings and a preliminary engineering drawing of it. At this point, I have engineering drawings, um, completed, and I've met with North Industrial Construction, and they've agreed that they'd like to help me with the project. And moving forward from here, I'm just working on getting it passed through the Architect Review Board and eventually the city council, so I just wanted to come and introduce myself and my project and see if you had any questions at this time.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much for, uh, coming and introducing yourself to anyone who hasn't met you, and thank you for choosing this project, I think it's super good for the community. The, um, drawings, can you leave them with the clerk or they, do you need to keep those copies?
I can leave them.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind leaving them with, uh, the city clerk, then she can then share them with us. If you do need to keep them, then we can do it via email or something.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Great, thank you.
And this is gonna be a stage that's permanently there?
Yes, that's the idea, mm-hmm. Wooden structure. Yes, that's the idea. Mm-hmm. Wooden structure.
Alright.
Yes, wooden structure with, it's poly wood decking to make it last longer and a metal roof.
Thank you, ma'am.
Alright, Ms. Serrano, you're next on the list. If you would come forward, you know the rules. State your name and address. Comments, two minutes or less, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Barbara Serrano. I'm here once again representing my sister Mildred G. Bruno, who passed recently. And according to all the proclamations all the way back to two thousand six, when the mayors here in the city of Hartsfield, y'all have named her as Angel, Angel Day and Angel Week. At this time, I'm requesting this so-called master plan that y'all have going on to please give her the honor that she deserved for her lifetime of generosity, leadership, mentorship to so many people all through this city, um, by naming a street for her. And I was, I chose Fifth Street because it goes through both white and black, and that's the way she was. She took care of everybody, don't care who it was. She was always there. She was the answer to a lot of people's prayer when they needed someone badly. And I just feel like I don't want to see all of what she did all of her life go without the proper legacy and honor that she deserved. So y'all see me all the time coming. I'm asking the same thing because I feel like she deserved it. I'll talk to some of the, you know, locals, and I tell them, where are the people from the neighborhood when you have council meeting? I don't ever see any on media. The churches are full every Sunday, so where are they on Tuesday? They come to council meeting and try to advocate for their community and make sure that the people in their community get the proper recognition they deserve. They're not there. So I don't understand. So I have come down here from Virginia, once every nine in a month, I'm able to come and try to advocate for her. She deserves it. And, uh, most of you there know from the letters that I have sent you and from the proclamations y'all have given her, know that she deserves it. So I'm hoping that with this new plan, a plan supposed to bring something new and improvement to the city, I hope you consider naming a street for her.
Great, thank you very much. We appreciate your, uh, involvement and your passion and encouraging people to participate.
Thank you.
Uh, Mrs., uh, Robinson, yes. Welcome. Uh, as I said before, please state your name and address for the record and limit your comments to two minutes or less, please.
Okay.
Glad to have you.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Mm-hmm.
My name is Robin Robinson, and I'm a resident of Bell Avenue here in Hartsfield. And my concern, um, today is, pass the, pass him up to him, about the, um, bulldogs that's running like in a pack and it's over on Bell Avenue all the time. They were like in my backyard, and I've come to the fire department, um, Chief Burke, um, he came over and they put a trap out in the yard, but that didn't help. It was, they didn't catch anything. Then, um, Christopher Morgan, he came over and stuff. Every time that someone would call, even some police officers have come, you know, once I've given them a call. But the thing is, the dogs are constantly over there. It's early in the morning, or during the day, even like yesterday, I tried to go to the store and I couldn't go. I had to turn around, and I got a stick I had to carry. I had to order some, um, like pepper spray, something for dogs and stuff because I'm disabled and I am afraid. And it's like three to four of them in a pack all the time that's running constantly up and down the street. So I'm just asking, is there any way possible that you can do something to prevent this and to capture those dogs? Because if they belong to someone, then, you know, they are not owning them, and they shouldn't be running around loose like that every day. If they are on my porch, early in the mornings, like four and five o'clock in the morning, they're booming on the porch, I hear it. And then it's like in the backyard, they're back there. And, um, I gave Councilwoman, um, Councilwoman Matt pictures that I've been taking, you know, every time I see them. So she has the pictures and everything, but, um, I have some signatures from some of the neighbors in the neighborhood that's been affected by it. But like I say, you know, we're afraid. Nobody wants to be attacked, you know, by those dogs. So please, if you can, help us, you know, resolve the issue about the dogs and, you know, do something. Like I say, if they don't have like tranquilizer guns or something, that, you know, you can kind of stop them or either get their owners to keep them tied up in their yards and, uh, fence or whatever they need to do. But, um, that's my concern, and I'm asking for your help, please, to, you know, help us, um, resolve that matter. And I thank you in advance, you know, but that's my concern.
I understand your concern, your fear of, unfortunately, the police department wasn't able to find them today. I assumed they were laying low, but it assured me that they'll be back out tonight, and I hope that we're able to capture them.
Okay.
Thank you for being here and for the letter as well.
I appreciate, thank you.
I need to make a comment. So there was an incident on Saturday, and, um, police were not able to respond. When I got the phone call, I had to go out because these dogs have bitten people and they have killed cats, five that we know of. Um, so when that happens, when they get the taste of blood, you know, she has a, a little, you know, limb, and then she has mace. Well, if the dogs attack her, the first thing gonna happen, she's gonna panic. And in Florence, a woman was mauled to death. And I want you guys to take this seriously. I thank you so much, Chief, for what you're doing because the, um, dogs, I had to go out and personally myself because there was nobody else to do it, and I don't want anybody to lose their life. So I also additionally have a letter from Ms. Rita Blatney, who lives at four oh one Marlborough Avenue, that they killed, um, five of her kittens. So I, I want to make that a note, and I also spoke with the officer, and we're dealing with it. Um, Chief Snail Grove is dealing with it.
Okay, thank you.
And I thank you so much.
You're welcome. I'd like to read your letter.
Yes.
If not, tomorrow. But that brings us to the end of public comment. Uh, thank you, everyone, uh, for your contributions. And that brings us on to the manager update. I love what you've done with your hair, Mr. Manager.
How slick is it?
It's working though.
Um, thank you, um, to the mayor. Um, multiple partnerships are underway, and you're being told that they should be finished by the end of the month.
Your microphone's off, ma'am.
It's off. Dick Mall works at Lot Harp within thirty, forty-five days.
Waiting on a cure, right?
Mm-hmm, waiting on it to cure. Um, that's gonna be a plus. Um, cemeteries, Marion Avenue and Green Lawn, those projects are both underway. So if you ride by there and see construction crews, um, construction vehicles, that's what's going on. And, um, we're looking forward to seeing that come to fruition because Green Lawn's getting a buffer, but Marion Avenue's really getting security. It's gonna get a nice fence around it and some other elements. In phase one, there'll be a phase two and phase three of that particular project. Um, Tourism Office left you some marketing materials at your place tonight to show how, um, different avenues that they're using to promote the city of Hartsfield. And we have city events, November, December events will be in the October utility bills that go out. So the public will be more aware of some of the events we're having going on around town for, because November and December are really busy around here. Anybody that wants to come downtown in November and December, you will have something that you can do and have a ball. Um, you can also see all these events on our website. Um, the, um, Treats on the Streets will be October twenty-fourth from five to seven. That's always a fun event with the families. The, um, Veterans Day Celebration will be November the eleventh at eleven. We have it eleven, eleven at eleven, and that'll be over in Burry Park as usual. Our Christmas parade this year will be December the seventh at six P.M. We're venturing out to a nighttime parade.
About thirty.
Six P.M. And she said about thirty, six P.M. was on their information I got, so whichever.
About thirty.
Okay, she should know.
I'll split the difference at five forty-five, do you?
That's about right. Um, but that's what I have for manager update tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, is that it?
That's it.
Make a pro tip and distract. But I thank you very much. Um, thank you for, uh, both for our staff for preparing the reports, but also for our committees and boards for the work that you do and, uh, passing that information up to us. So we know what you're working on. That brings us to unfinished business, starting with item number six. The public hearing and final reading of ordinance forty-four eighty. Madam Manager, if you would publish it by title and presentation.
Mr. Mayor, if you would, deal with the consent agenda, I'd be happy to.
Do I need a motion?
You just need to set to.
Oh, um, the consent agenda is accepted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now on to item six.
That's right. Unfinished business. Public hearing and final reading of ordinance forty-four eighty, an ordinance to the city of Hartsfield, South Carolina to authorize a lease purchase financing in an amount not exceeding one million, nine hundred thousand dollars and other matters related thereto. This happens to be something that we do pretty much on an annual basis, and it's the way that we handle equipment that we need to, um, obtain every year for the city. This year, we have public safety equipment. Um, we, our elevator in City Hall needs desperately to have some repair and equipments to that. Um, lawnmowers, street sweepers, water sewer trucks, and some water park equipment and repairs.
Thank you. And as, um, well, I'll, uh, I would entertain a motion to, uh, actually, public hearing comes first.
Yes, sir.
I'll now open the public hearing ordinance forty-four eighty. If you'd like to speak on this ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, keep your comments to two minutes or less. Nobody jumping at the bit, so the public hearing is now closed. I would entertain a motion to approve the final reading and waiving of the complete reading of forty-four eighty.
Mayor so moved. Second.
Have a motion and seconds. Are there any discussion or questions on this one? I didn't want to say, as, uh, our assistant manager pointed out last year, that the interest rates are working in our favor, which is, is nice. Um, but Ms. Matt, were you gonna say something?
No.
Anything over here, gentlemen? Alright. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of approving the final reading and waiving the complete reading of ordinance forty-four eighty, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Ordinance forty-eighty passes. Thank you very much. Now moving on to the final reading and public hearing of forty-four eighty-one. Madam Manager, if you would publish it by title and presentation.
Public hearing and final reading ordinance forty-four eighty-one, an ordinance to lease office space located on the property at one forty-seven West Carolina Avenue to Community Foundation for a Better Hartsfield. This happens to be a room, room number eight, that they were already using, and now we're going into an annual, one-year lease.
I will open the public hearing, uh, ordinance forty-four eighty-one. If you'd like to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Hearing none, the public, uh, hearing ordinance forty-four eighty-one is now closed. I would entertain a motion to approve the final reading and waiving of the complete reading of ordinance forty-four eighty-one.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Are there any questions, clarifications, discussion on this one?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, um, could you explain the conditions of the office space that they're using?
I, it's a small room. Um, do you, can you elaborate on that, Madam?
No, I, I just need to know, it's, it's, uh, in kind donation, correct?
Or is it a dollar? I mean, it's the same thing, right?
Yes, very much. And it's for the executive director who works part-time.
Right. Okay, and on that note, I just would like to, uh, reiterate the Community Foundation for a Better Hartsfield, their funding runs through the city and we're tied, you know, with them. Um, and I ask to have more diversity, equity, and inclusion because there is no information in the South Hartsfield community about the Community Foundation for a Better Hartsfield. So I would advise us to stay on this. It passes, but i- it needs to be better.
I want to, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for the vote? Alright, hearing no more discussion. All those in favor of approving the final reading and waiving the complete reading of ordinance forty-four eighty-one, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. On a reading of ordinance forty-four eighty-one, passes. Moving on to the public hearing, uh, and final reading of ordinance forty-four eighty-two. Madam Manager, if you would publish it by title and presentation for the record.
Public hearing final reading of ordinance forty-four eighty-two, an ordinance to the lease of approximately three point four zero acres of property located behind the residences on fourteen, um, Street Apartments with access to Sparrow Avenue, text map parcel number zero three five one six zero two zero nine two and zero three six zero four zero one zero one three to the Community Foundation for a Better Hartsfield, home of included in Hartsfield Community Garden. Community Garden is going through by those one state ways, Community for a Better Hartsfield, in order to operate this on that property. And that's why it's created for Community for a Better Hartsfield and not the Community Garden.
Excellent, okay, thank you. Um, thank you for that. Uh, I will now open the public hearing for ordinance forty-four eighty-two. If anyone would like to speak, please come state, come forward, state your name and address for the record, keep your comments to two minutes or less. I was hoping somebody would bring some vegetables. Um, hearing none, the public hearing ordinance forty-four eighty-two is now closed. Um, I would entertain a motion to approve the final reading and waive the complete reading of ordinance forty-four eighty-two.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to pass the final reading of ordinance forty-four eighty-two.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, questions on this?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I would like to see everything, what I said in the first one, forty-four eighty-one, in that next one.
You just want to see transparency. Yes, thank you.
No, I want to see diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Oh, 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 sorry, misunderstood.
South Hartsfield.
We, we need to highlight that that is a landlocked piece of land, correct?
It is. It's absolutely landlocked. The access is off Sparrow. That's why there's two taxes, that parcel number, the bigger parcel behind the apartments and then the bus up to Sparrow, and the only access to it is off Sparrow Avenue, very narrow access.
And it's long and narrow, which makes it difficult to find something to do with it. Uh, anything else?
One question.
Mm-hmm.
Once this community garden gets up and running and produce is available out of it, how do people get it if they need it?
I don't know that I can answer that question.
I can, I tell you offline. I tell you offline.
What?
You can tell me online.
Pretty much. Most, you're going on, I'm sure. Most community garden, the person, they parcel out a section of it, and whatever you grow, you, you harvest that and section off pretty much. It's a pretty simple process, but the key is sustaining it. So I wish it well.
And I think there's a charitable component, too. I imagine they, they plan on donating a good bit of it, um, if I remember correctly, but I can't speak for the organization. Uh, anything else before we vote?
Just access and knowledge.
Alright, thank you. Uh, all those in favor of approving the final reading of ordinance forty-four eighty-two and waiving the complete reading, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, and the ordinance passes. Uh, our last unfinished business, item nine. Madam Manager, if you would publish forty-four eighty-three by title and presentation for the record.
Public hearing final reading ordinance forty-four eighty-three, lease property on the corner of Marlborough Avenue and Seventh Street to the Hartsfield Rescue Squad. This is an annual lease that will be with the Rescue Squad and the property. They have built in there the equipment that they use. And this is on the annual base of the squad and that.
Um, I will now open the public hearing on forty-four eighty-three. If you'd like to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, keep your comments to two minutes or less. Hearing none, the public hearing for forty-four eighty-three is now closed. I will entertain a motion to approve the final reading, uh, and waive the complete reading of ordinance, uh, forty-four eighty-three.
Mr. Mayor so moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a couple of seconds. Thank you very much. Are there any questions or discussions on this? Hearing none will vote. Um, all those in favor of approving the final reading and waiving the complete reading of forty-four eighty-three, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, and the ordinance has passed. The ayes have it and the ordinance has passed. Which brings us on to new business, item number 10. Uh, Madam Manager, would you publish resolution 102401 by title and presentation for the record?
I've the open submission of an application by the city of Hartsfield to division of community grant programs, CPTG, by the South Carolina Department of Commerce. We had previously approved this, but then, um, the PD cop who was handling this for us set back some additional language that the state was requiring. So this is not changing our application, it's just cleaning up some language.
Alright, um, the public hearing here, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution 102401.
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, is there any discussion on this resolution?
Mr. Mayor, if you could briefly just tell them what it is.
Um.
This is Washington Street, South Hall, projects.
The, uh, connectivity project, right, east, east of west connectivity.
From there all the way through 14th, on Washington.
Thank you both for the clarification.
And has to do with less than about a year and a month.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything over here? Steven, alright. All those in favor of approving resolution 102401, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, resolution passes. On to item 11, resolution 102402. Um, Madam Manager, if you would publish it by title and presentation for the record.
A2 is a critical bid award for the design and installation of playground equipment at Pride Park. He had the package that has the bids in it and they chose, um, the bidder that they feel the best handled this project parts and the, um, the service for the project and consistent with the, um, needs of Pride Park. This is phase one, the playground equipment and that would be other, um, improvements to be determined to be handled there at Pride Park. So we're real fortunate to be able to get this at this time. The bid award is from Arpa.
Arpa, okay, thank you. Uh, before discussion, um, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution 102402.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, this is a phase of a project to work on, the Pride Park. There are some other things that are coming, but this is just like for the playground equipment and I wanted to make sure everybody understood that.
Alright, thank you. Okay, alright. All those in favor of passing resolution 102402, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, 2402 is passes, or it passes. Item number 12, resolution 102403. Madam Manager, if you would publish it by title and presentation.
Yes, sir. Zero and three is approval for authorization from the city of Hartsfield to provide a letter of support for infrastructure improvements for potential workshops and housing project. This is a project that, um, Jim's giving to us about tonight.
Miss Wilkins.
You have any questions?
Okay, uh.
Is your letter of support?
Okay, like the last one.
Yes, sir, just like the last. As she mentioned, they're planning on combining based on phase two, so this letter of support will be for the combination.
Alright, all those, um, excuse me, I would entertain a motion to pass resolution 102403.
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any discussion on this one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, she said that they, um, were looking at it to be, it could be one piece, one big piece and then if they need to, they could split it back into two.
Depending on the approval, is how I understood it.
Yes, however it does, um, I, I hope and pray that we get that because we need as much additional housing as we can get.
Agree, like I've said before.
Affordable.
Fill on up, any other questions or comments on this? Alright, all those in favor of approving resolution 102403, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, no.
Alright, got that, Madam Clerk? Alright, the ayes have it, resolution 102403 passes. That brings us to item, well, there's a, an image of it for those interested. Uh, moving on to item 13, resolution 102404. Madam Manager, if you would publish it by title and presentation for the record.
1024 is I've the open submission of an application by the city of Hartsfield to the South Carolina Rural Infrastructure Authority, which is RIA, and this is for rehabilitation of Latin Green Comp Station. They provide a $1,000 grant. And the city will be required to, um, assume all night construction related costs, which is pretty much engineering fees.
Thank you very much, you answered my question. Okay, you answered my question. Um, I would entertain a motion to pass resolution 102404.
So moved.
Second, have a motion in a second, any discussion or questions on this?
Do we have an estimate of what those engineering fees would be?
I'll pass that right on back to the Madam Manager.
And my question, I guess there'd be more of a follow-up question on that, is where would the monies come from, from that? Is that, we've already allocated where in our budget, is that money gonna come out of?
It would be, this would be the utility fund, because it's Latin Green Comp Station. So it would be probably, I'm saying probably, because I'm the person who's not here tonight. We do have some line items to bill in for rent matches. I'm not sure if that's in there or not, but that would be a question for us. But this would be not from the general fund, but utility fund, because of the comp station.
Thank you.
Good for now, alright, thank you. Question, anything else? Alright, uh, hearing no more questions. I would, uh, all those in favor of passing resolution 102405, nope, 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 102404, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, 102404 passes. Moving on to item 14, Madam Manager, if you would publish resolution 102405 by title and presentation for the record.
That's five, is a critical of bidding work for the Hartsfield Regional Air Force Runway Rehabilitation. And, um, this is really needed, this airport is our economic engine for a lot of things around here and this will be for, um, $5,280,220 dollars. Am I putting that dollar math correctly? And the match on this, we will be taking care of in time by selling the asphalt that's removed.
Yeah, yeah.
That's our match and we've got to take care of.
Alright, thank you, I would, uh, entertain a motion to pass resolution 102405. So moved. Have a motion, have a motion in a couple of seconds. Any, uh, comments or questions on this? Thank you for the explanation, you answered mine ahead of me. Well, hearing none, um, take a vote, all those in favor of passing resolution 102405, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, resolution 102405 passes. Moving on to our last item of new business, resolution 102406. Madam Manager, if you would do your thing.
Yes, and this is the, um, engineering and professional services for the airport runway rehabilitation. Uh, we're required to have represented, representatives of professional administration for these grants. And Tower Frye and Ellington have been doing engineering planning for all, all of our air, air brands and other brands at the airport, the various, the facility. And so we are recommending that you, uh, engage in this.
Thank you, um, I would entertain, entertain a motion to approve resolution 102406.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, is there any discussion?
Uh, the group that you mentioned, that's like sole source or, they're not putting out a bid for it?
It was a sole source because they handle all of our engineering previously.
Got it, okay.
And so they're very, with all the projects we've done up there, they kept handling a lot of the funding sources and the grants and they deal with the state, Aeronautics and the federal aviation and construction costs.
Alright, thank you.
Because they do need that contract with them.
Got it, okay.
Alright, hearing no other comment. Um, all those in favor of passing resolution 102406, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, resolution passes. And that brings us to executive session, time for most of us to go home. Thank you, most of y'all anyway. I would entertain a motion to enter executive session, pursue it to SC Code 4, Section 347A2 for discussion of negotiations.
Incident to propose contractual agreements with timely development.
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a couple of seconds, um.
We need to vote. Counsel, we need to vote.
All those in favor of entering executive session, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, we now stand in executive session. Thank you again, everybody.